...point two.
Thanks for having me. I just kind of put together a brief list of some of the things I've kind of been working on with the district. Most of this is fairly recent. I kind of included some of the daily duties, but that is very difficult because, just like my job anywhere, whether it's in the schools or outside of the schools, I just never know what tomorrow's gonna bring. So, I tried to cover some of the things. One of the big things I want to touch on there is that mental health eval part. One thing I'm working with more in police, FM ambulance, and Lakeland Mental Health. There's a new suicide assessment out there that's being used regionally. It's being used at Sanford, Decentia, Prairie, Lakeland. FM ambulance, all the local police departments are using it, and a lot of the schools are moving to it as well too. So, it's a new assessment, because in the past when somebody said that they were gonna harm themselves, immediately they got thrown in an ambulance and brought to the hospital. We found ever over hospitalized people from all this new assessment. We kind of rank them from low, moderate, or high risk. And then depending on what their risk is, we can just provide resources to them versus actually having to put them in an ambulance and hospitalized them. So, that new tool is hopefully gonna be going out here at the school fairly soon. Working with the councilors and admin team on some training. They do a little bit online training on that. It's a really simple tool. It's a tool that I've shared with parents that have students in crisis, and anybody can really use it. So, that's kind of one of the big things I want to touch on there. Lockdowns, at the beginning of the school year, we switched from a traditional lockdown, as many years know, where we lock the door, shut off the lights, and hide in the corners, to a more proactive response. So, we did a two-hour training for all staff. We broke it up into smaller groups, and had some other deputies come in and help me with that. And we're changing, like I said, that proactive. Instead of just hiding in the corner an hour, we can barricade rooms a little bit more. We can evacuate if the threat is it. The high school down here, let's get the elementary evacuated. Let's not sit around and wait for someone to come and do harm. We also talk about countering that threat. Obviously, that varies by the ability of the students in that group versus high school all the way down to kindergarten. But we do discuss how to counter someone that is a threat to us as well, which is not fighting. We don't teach them strikes, kicks, anything like that. We just talk about using a squirm technique, using their body weight. A lot of studies out there that support this. In fact, the department of red has been supporting this since 2013. So, it's kind of the shift in all of schools right now going to this type of a lockdown. Some people may have heard of ALIS or Run Height Fight. It's the same concept. We're just calling it options-based. It's a generic terminology for anything else, so we're not using one specific program. We're kind of using bits and pieces from a bunch of different programs. Working with the admin team on how to continue that training as new staff come throughout the year. And every year we'll have new staff. Is it a training that we're gonna put on just for the new staff? Are we gonna do some type of refresher for all staff? Or what that's gonna look like yet? We're still kind of working on that. Drills are still being conducted at a regular interval. Those are really dependent on the building principals. When they let me know when they're gonna do a lockdown, I provide them with a scenario for that drill. And then, what we have done, we started slow with what we call lock and talks. So, we'd still lock the door, but instead of hiding in the corner and wasting five minutes during a lockdown drill, they had discussions with their classes age appropriately about what they could be doing further to secure that room, or if they had to be back, you wait where would they go, and things like that. I did send out an email last week concerning fire drills. I don't know if you guys got that or not. That's kind of been the hot topic now nationally with what to do with fire drills. So, I kind of addressed that the only way I could. I legally can't tell somebody not to listen to a fire alarm, nor will I. So, I just asked them to continue to use that common sense, just like they would, you know, slow down, figure out the facts on front of you before you make your decision on what to do. Back in January, we did a BERT training, or Building Emergency Response Team. So, we did a, I think it was two or three-hour training for those that were able to attend. We have some makeup sessions to do there, but this definitely stepped in the right direction to get people in the building prepared for emergencies that might be occurring. And it's also good that if we have to evacuate one school and have the other school come to the other site, then we have a team ready to welcome them and start getting the building prepared for that. The other big piece with that is the communication. Right now, we use two-way radios within the schools. Trouble with that is we can't communicate in between sites right now. So, a number of us are kind of piloting an app on our phones right now called Zellul. It's a pretty cool app. We've got some deputies that use it, and the deputies that use it are in the ham radio and amateur radio, some of that stuff. So, they trust this product. It's got a lot of nice features. It works over cellular or Wi-Fi. So, if that's something to look at moving forward too, we'd encourage those with the BERT team to download that app, and then we can set up independent channels, and we can communicate district-wide now with that without having to put up repeaters and spend a lot of money on the structure there. One of the biggest things we're working on right now is our EOP, or Emergency Operation Plan. I learned that this is a little outdated, and it needs overhaul. So, that's kind of what Ms. Kretschle and I have been working on a lot lately. And this is really critical for us to have and be updated. This moves us into FEMA compliance once this will be, once it's finished. And that's the big thing, because whether it's a human disaster or a natural disaster, ultimately, we're gonna look into FEMA for funds. And if we're not within compliance of their regulations, they're not gonna give us the money. So, whether, like I said, it's a fire that affects one of our buildings, and we don't have the appropriate plans in place ahead of time, they're not gonna be able to reimburse us any of our money. So, that's one of the big things there. We also want to be compliant with current policies and state laws that are out there. This reduces liability to the district, which is huge. And that just provides that guidance for any administrator or staff, whether it's a short-term or long-term emergency that displaces staff and students. So, that's kind of the big thing right now. Another thing, myself, and Ms. Kretschle, and the councilors and social workers are on, coming up with a protocol if there's a death of a student or staff member. With the recent death of the community member down in Barnesville that affected Barnesville and Holly, we were able to send some of our councilors down there. They felt that this was an important thing to be prepared for in our district. So, we're working on updating that, and that'll also be reflected in the EOP, as Emergency Operation Plan. Confidentiality concerns. We've had a number of administrative lockdowns for a number of reasons in our schools. Those can be used for when we have the safety dogs come through that search for drugs and weapons and such. We go into administrative lockdown. It might be for a student concern. It might be for medical situation. There's always that want-to-know-or-need-to-know balance with what we share for information. So, that's one thing that we're continually working with on the admin team is, you know, deciding what and how much information should be shared and who should be shared to. And then, Dara will be starting soon. Ready to flower?
Yes.
Okay. So, we don't have any dates or times set yet, but that will be starting soon in that same classroom. That's kind of what I've been working on.
How often do the dogs come through the parking lots and stuff? I mean, obviously, it's probably pretty random this year.
It is, and I don't know what we have set up for contract with them. That's mostly set up through the building principals. I don't know the number of times they see. We use InterQuest Agency out of Mary Roch Mills. And they, you can set up a contract where we're gonna pay for, say, ten times a year, and they just show up randomly, or you can request them on certain days and times. So, I don't know what contract.
I think it's monthly sound?
Nah, it seems high.
And it's gotta be six, because I think they had either six or nine typically? Because there's certain months that they leave out.
Communication with them as far as when they're coming. So, even to myself and to the building principals, it's a surprise.
And what they normally do is just ask for a copy of the calendar so that they know if there's any particular dates you want them to make sure that they avoid. And otherwise, it's...
Testing to use?
It's up to them.
Just came through, last week they came through. Dog in one locker, it ended up being a false alarm that happened in two, which we're glad to see.
Yeah.
And the schools are all locked, secured entrances?
During that time?
Well, no, not during that time, just in general, every day.
Uh, no.
No.
So, currently at the Dilworth site, during school hours, door one is open. And then over here, door one and twenty, is it twenty?
So, we have a few that are open, but the rest are locked?
Yep. And that's something, depending on how things go with the task force and voting next year, you know, to be part of that process when we get, if we're able to get to that point of, you know, how we design things with security aligned and location of cameras and things like that.
How often do you go through the parking lots?
Myself or Cam?
I don't think here.
It really varies this time of the year, not very often. No, it varies, especially if we have increased concerns ongoing through. I do what's called plane view searches. So, I look through windows and look for any contraband. You'd be surprised that you can find a homeowner or a car by looking through their windows. So, I do that. I would say on average, I'll do this once a month throughout the year. Spring and fall, when kids are outside and a lot more active, I spend a lot more time out there too. So, and then, just by nature of the beast, it seems like I'm, when my time is split up between the two sites, I'm usually trying to move back and forth around that lunchtime period.
So, you try to split your day kind of based on...
It tries to be close to fifty-fifty. There's times where I'm at the other site more, and there's times when I'm over here more. But I send out a schedule every two weeks to all the building principals so they have an idea of where I'm at roughly, if I have other things that I'm off-campus for, whether it's for a training or slot or whatever it might be. So, they have a ballpark idea of where I'm supposed to be.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
I'd be interested in talking more on security and stuff at our work session.
And the timing will be good as we, you know, start looking at CM and such. You know, because when, and even when you read the CM part, I mean, I think, and some of us have talked about it, the whole safety, security is gonna become a bigger factor, let's face it, and needing to. You know, we have certain designs of these buildings that just, you know, it's just like the enclosed courtyard. It may have been a great idea back in the sixties when it was designed, but it just doesn't make very good sense now. And, you know, it's looking at the, you think of the Dilworth site, the kindergarten rooms. Yeah, it's nice to be able to go right out into that play area out front. But man, that creates some safety and security issues. So, there's some definite discussions.
All right. Moving on to six point four, board committee reports.
I can do policy if you want to do our F and P one. So, policy met on Thursday night. Our new members are now Raleigh, Bobby Joe, and myself. Tonight, you guys had in your packet to review eight oh one, eight oh two, eight oh five, eight oh seven, and nine oh three. The reason why we skipped a couple, we have tabled crisis management policy eight oh six. This is going to wait for updates from the CAS Clay Crisis Management Team. Is that correct?
Yeah, that'll be that EOP that he was talking about.
And then, we've also tabled nine oh two, use of district facilities and equipment. The reason being is there are several addendums that need to be reviewed as well. So, we're gonna get those printed off and review those. Our goal for next policy, to wrap up Raleigh and my big book, and then start over again. Yeah, Bobby's little book. Nine oh two, four, five, six, and seven. And hopefully, we can get that done by the March April timeline, kind of get that off. So, that's my policy report.
For personnel, we talked about contracts as far, or I mean, early retirement, and how to move forward with that, what has been done in the past, and what our recommendations are as far as letting those individuals know who are looking at retiring, what the compensation package is would be. Another thing we had talked about is the administrative contracts that we are doing tonight. How that this is not, this is not under the umbrella of the Administrative Committee that they will be setting up a meeting to go over site principals' evaluations. And they already have that. I'll give you that time at the end of the meeting, when that will be. We just talked about how we do contracts. Master agreement contracts are done as everyone, and we don't pull individual teachers out. It's a master agreement, and so, we are looking at the administrative contracts tonight for three of our people, and that is on the agenda at nine point one, or two, three, and four. Okay. Moving on to six point four.
I'll try to make it as short as I can. So, again, you have a copy of the report. Just a few things, and there's all the bullet points under those particular district and superintendent goals. In particular, the college and career component, that goal, a lot of work going on with that. We know that AVID continues to be one of the programs that's being implemented. Some of the timeline components, to make sure that we have it all the way, that we have a long-term plan six twelve is critical. At the national conference, I had a couple of different meetings on Naviance. We know Morehead uses Naviance. We know that Fergus Falls, there's a few in our area. About sixty percent of all the students in Minnesota are in school districts that utilize Naviance. And so, you're going to, we're actually going to probably set up a webinar during an evening for the board to see exactly what this is, because it has some... We had both of the lead principals, Matt and Heidi, and Katie Olman, do a webinar for about an hour last Friday. That's why I didn't get back to you, because we were in the middle of a webinar. But did a webinar for about an hour. We are in the middle of getting a projected quote for that. The plan is to set up webinars for the site teams at the middle school and the high school, and as we continue to move forward, looking at how those two programs work together, the AVID programming and the Naviance overall umbrella. And it does work very well with student information systems, pulling that in. So, there is a lot of potential, and I know that Katie was... Comparison would be what we do with MCIS at the high school, except it's just, it has that many more tools available to it. So, you're gonna be hearing a lot more over the next month as we go through the spring on this, if the plan is to continue moving it forward. And we'll see what... This is something that has to be driven internally by the sites, because it has to be something that becomes an embedded way of approaching on the career and college readiness. But it really has some neat tools for helping students really work on goal-setting and looking at the different careers that are out there and the actual trainings available through post-secondary, whether it be through technical colleges or the four-year colleges. So, it, I think it has a lot of potential for, in particular, our, some of our students that may not know what they want to do yet, because it sets up so many opportunities for them to explore different careers. So, lots in the trades, lots, lots of different levels. So, you will, I think it'll be well worth having a webinar with the board for that. And they were receptive to that, doing that in an evening. So, IXL is, we should have that. Had an email from Andrew Melvin that he'd received information from IXL. This is the program that has been utilized mainly in the elementaries through the middle school. We were looking at the usage reports from last spring. It's the preparation to get ready for the MCA testing in particular. But it does have curriculum components, math, science, social studies, language arts. From what we could see in the usage reports from last year, language arts and math, of course, because that's the big ones on the testing with MCAs, had the biggest usage. And we had varying from twenty, thirty hours from some classroom teachers all the way to five hundred hours by some. So, that tells me that there is usage, getting ready for those tests. So, again, that was one thing that was requested by staff, in particular at the elementary and middle levels. So, we have a pilot available for them, and then there will be a committee. They will decide, we'll be able to see what kind of usage there is, and whether to continue once we know that we're done with the pilot, and it's gonna cost a little bit more money. Okay. The second goal there, I've completed three meetings, faculty meetings. Tomorrow, we have a seven-thirty one, I think, over at high school. You guys have a meeting tomorrow at seven-thirty? I sure hope. Yeah, and it's with moi, if you have one. So, that's the, so the high school's the last of the four sites. And basically, what I've been doing is going around each of the sites. We've been talking about the realignment and walking through some scenarios on how this is, you know, how it really is centralizing some of this decision-making and giving a little bit more ownership to people and opportunity to expand our leadership. So, and as we finish that up, then, over the next two, three weeks, prior to the twelfth of March, we'll have all the internal selections for the committees, and then bring a report and show you what that's looking like for the board on the twelfth. So, when we hit the work session, we can walk through some scenarios on how this will all work. If the goal, as a, for instance, if one of the goals, let's say six twelve, is a particular curriculum area that is, needs to be revamped, new courses, new curriculum materials, textbooks, and what else not, they set that up as a goal. Well, then, that also is gonna need professional development. So, staff development inclusion for it. How the dollars get distributed for the planning, and laying out the whole goal-setting plan associated with that. So, it should provide opportunity for more people to be involved in the process, to know exactly what's going on, and not to have it just go through a handful of people to get the information. So, they'll be actively involved in it. So, that should be coming up, like I said, tomorrow is the last of those meetings, and then the twelfth will bring everything forward to the board after... Because what we're asking everybody, all the faculty, is, you know, pick one of these committees, whether it be staff development, the facility expansion, the crisis, or the BERT teams, the, looking at the climate and culture piece. We want to have a lot of distribution of talent on those, where people have passion in those areas. The maintenance department restructuring, we talked about that, the operations last month, or earlier this month. So, I've given the task to James and Tammy, go through these job descriptions. Let's get this separation. Let's get some improvements on this cleaning, and so that we don't have issues about, this site's three short today, and this site has all their people. Redistribute as you need so that we know that there's particular standards that we can expect. These things are gonna happen on a daily basis, these on a weekly, and get that standard in place. And let's be done with this thing about we're always shorthanded, and it's just inconsistent. So, that redistribution, as we talked about in operations, will mean that, okay, Tammy, you're in charge to make sure that these standards are in place. James, you're in charge to make sure that the maintenance, the fixits, and what things can we do in-house compared to what things we have to farm out? So, that'll all be coming, and that'll be another great topic, I think, for the work session. Get right from the operations committee and get some recommendations moving forward. RFP for construction management. As I put my email last week, and I talked to Sandy about this, I wanted to make sure that there is no if, ands, or buts, we're all on the same page on this. I checked with Brandon over at Morehead. I wanted to see what kind of timelines they had on these things. Again, it's, I went through the RFP, they're fairly standard, but I went through the RFP that we had in 2015. I went through the RFP that Morehead had, and just took the components from both. There was a couple of things that Morehead had that I really liked. And one of them was on the third page of the proposal, if I recall. Let's see, it might be a second. Oh, it's on the second page, and it was a qualifier that they put in on that third paragraph. DJF School District reserves right to request additional information from applicants to qualify or disqualify applicants, reject any or all proposed, waive any irregularities in proposal should it be in the best interest of the school district. Select a proposal that's in the best interest of the school district, and not necessarily lowest-cost proposal, and to cancel the request for proposal at any time. Again, that means you've got full ownership. If all of a sudden you say, "Look, we're not gonna move on this right now," you just stop it. Okay? But I think with the priorities that we've all talked about, safety and security and what else not, we gotta just get this process moving. So, the timeline would be, and what Morehead had was about three weeks after they sent it out. Unless there's wordsmithing that you see, like I said, I've worked on it and then had some reviews done. I wanted to make sure that, okay, am I missing something in this? So, you know, that's why I've had some of the discussions. Brandon's gone through it a couple more times than I've gone through on building projects. So, we talked about it a little bit. And so, I would get this out, get it on the website by Wednesday this week, get it out to the forum. We've had, I've had contact from some, mainly more in the architectural side, and I've just asked them to email me their contact info so that as we get ready for the RFP for A and E afterwards, not only do we put it out in there, but we'll also make sure that those particular ones who've contacted us get the information also. So, if you get contacted, or if you have talked to somebody at MSBA or what else not, just make sure they shoot an email, and that way, we'll make sure that we have them on the list.
So, I kind of like to read through these things, well, ten times.
That's one of the reasons I wanted you to, you know, instead of me putting it out.
So, I mean, if there's anything that I'm like, eh, what does that mean? Or can we tweak it or anything of that nature, just email you?
Just email me. That's why I thought I'll wait until Wednesday, you know, to send it out. But you will see that it is, it really does take... The big difference from before and fifteen is that this one really hones in more on the fact that... that the basis of it is that we are looking at our existing facilities and the needs to make them safe and the remodeling needs. So it's, it's not committing us to any particular tasks associated with the project. It's just giving us, we have to put out the ballpark number. Again, that can be adjusted, but they need to get a ballpark number to be able to work with so they can figure out what kind of a percent they're going to be looking at. The bigger the projects, of course, the more competitive it is to get that percent.
Well, I don't remember exactly what's on the city's task force list. But I know that security
Yeah.
has moved to the top.
I think security was their number one.
Was it?
And I, I, from, from the survey of constituents.
It was.
That was a top. Which, that, that's nice that we, we have that information back from the survey, that we can say, okay, what was the, the, what consideration would, would make it more favorable for you to support this? And safety and security was so big. And so, you know, I, I think there's even some adjustments that we can, we can make that have, you know, come up as, as even from when the task force is met. You know, like I said, that front of that building over Dilworth, the entrance is here and just what the city here is doing with the street. You know, we've got to be able to make some plans with that. And the idea of some one-ways and what else not for the, the buses flow through. We have time to work with the architects, get the input. This, this provides us time in April and in late March and April and May to sit down with our facilities, task force committee, get the right people on board. I mean, the Jeff, the Jeff Lees of the world have to be on something like that. It just makes sense. The people, the staff members that are directly involved in some of the areas that may be turned upside down. Think of the, you know, our, our people that are in Fayed, if we're going to be doing things with the gyms, people in our media centers, they need to be, they hopefully should be asking to sign up to be on those committees. Because we would want that type of input from them. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to how that can pan out over the spring. And then it gives us time to talk to the staff before they leave and at the end of May. And to have, I, because I really think it would be well worth having community listening sessions at each of the sites. Set up some tours so that people see our issues with the safety and security in particular. Set up the tours, set up a night where, you, you know, from X time to X time, we're gonna, you can walk the building and we'll give you some tours and you ask questions. And then bring them into the gym and lay out, here's the things we're looking at. Are we missing something? And do that at both sites. Have the engineers, have the architects there, have the C and, CNM there. And then that way they can continue to formulate the plan and get it more specific. So we, we are in good, if, you know, the, the more after I have some of the conversations. Morehead, for example, they, they went with their architects and engineers in June for a November vote. So, I mean, we are, it's not like we're behind in April on this right now. We're in good shape because we've done the, the task force things already. We've done the tax tolerance surveying of the community. So we've done some of those big steps in advance. Other topics, legislative update, just so you're aware, this is one that affects all employees that are with TRA. And again, we don't know how this is all going to play out. Currently, TRA is seven and a half percent, both employer and employee. There look, there's a bill out there right now, it's Senate File twenty-six-twenty. And that is looking at raising the TRA employer, employee just by a quarter percent to seven point seven-five, employer to eight point seven-five. But again, that's by two thousand twenty-three. Notice the employee in that bill is that that one is just raised in that year. So no increases in the employee part until two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. But the employer, again, that's where the negotiations will come in, how much increases over each year. And we don't know that yet, it's, it's, but we know they're gonna, we know it is a high priority in this legislative session because it's no different than construction costs. The longer you wait, the more inflation, the bigger the issue. And the TRA issue is going to just keep blossoming and getting bigger. Notice the other piece, for some of those who may soon be retiring, cost of living adjustment will be dropped down to one percent immediately. So that one is, again, this is all in that Senate bill. The other piece that is definitely on the radar right now is all of the student protests planned. And that is something that I've met with the principals about. This is something that needs to be discussed at site team meetings, faculty meetings. And I, and I think it, some of us have talked about this. I think it would be well worth trying to get a proactive look at this. Let's talk with our student leadership. Because, you know, there are some different ones coming up. March fourteenth, that's the, probably the easiest one because that's a seventeen-minute one. Walkout at ten in the morning. March for Our Lives is a Saturday nationwide protest, but at least it's a Saturday one. I know there are, I have not heard anything in the FM area if there's going to be a big march. We know in the Twin Cities there is to the Capitol. Washington DC, of course, will have a huge one. And then the other one that we have some time to prepare for, but is important that we do prepare for, is the April twentieth. And as most people know, that is the anniversary of Columbine. It is associated with Hitler's, you know, there's all these different things associated with April twentieth. Okay? And that is the big high school walkout for anti-gun violence. And these are websites that are out there, folks, and there's sign-ups. There's two-hundred-and-some-thousand people that have signed up for that one. So we have to at least plan so that we're not reacting to these things as they come up. And we might as well be open about it. Let's have open discussions. It's not just assume, and if we don't say anything, it won't, it won't happen. I'd rather have open discussions with students and parents and, and let's put a plan together. So that is going to be pretty critical. There is, the national conference I went to, they're putting out a link, it's not there yet, basically all the PowerPoints from the conference. And then I will download those, put them into a folder. And that's a shared resource folder that we put out to all the leadership teams. Upcoming events, you know, the, the boys are playing tomorrow night, last game. Seedings will come out Saturday, girls' basketball plays Thursday, they got the number-one seed. And then the wrestling, we've got two that qualified for state. And that's it. What's going on? Any questions?
I can't believe they put these dates out. So when they say they're going to have a WASC, kid walk out, they're going to be outside of the school?
They're, the, on the seventeenth, it's some, and, and that was, there was an article in the Herald.
No, but they're just going to stand outside it in front of the school for a certain amount of time?
The seventeen-minute one on the fourteenth?
That's just giving every weirdo in the world time to prepare for this.
Well, remember, and some, these are student-led march demonstrations.
Well, I understand that, but it's not very safe.
So that's why we just need to, we, we need to be, we need to be preparing for these as, as the potentialities and, and so that, you know.
So are we going to get any of what administration?
Yes, yeah. But again, you know, part of it is because, you know, all of this stuff started coming out last week. I'm betting that nobody's been able to even have those. You, you think about what MSBA and all these, MREA, they're, all these resources have been coming out as last week was going on. So.
There was an article in the forum today of Morehead, two Morehead students that are organizing.
So.
So I think bringing the students into this, to have an active discussion of what they'd like to do to recognize it. It is definitely a safety, you know, a safety thing. But they're also, you know, these kids are put up with having fear there for their lives at school. So I think they should join the conversation.
Oh, I completely agree with you. It's just, I feel, I fear for their
Oh, yeah, I'd rather have them go in the gym.
Safety when they give a date and a time, what they're going to do.
Well, send them to Jean in the gym.
Jean's like.
You know, that's why Bemidji, you know, in the Herald, that article about what Bemidji's doing is they're, they're using that time to have conversations in every classroom about the safety and security at their site. And so that's, they've had some of those discussions already. So.
If this is something that you know is going to be coming down the pike in our school system, it needs to be communicated with the parents as well.
Yeah.
Especially at a certain level. My kids are in fourth grade, would they understand what they're walking out for? I doubt it. Would I want them to personally? No, because they're not mature enough to understand what they're doing. And so I don't want that impressed upon them personally. So with that being said, if the communication can reach across the district to the parents so that they know, and that's fine, I mean, to, you know, that's, if it's done in a safe and controlled manner, then that's good. But there are safety concerns too with just letting.
You know, there's easier things, it's, it's easier to plan for the seventeen-minute thing. It's a lot easier to plan for that one, but the April twentieth, that one just has trouble written all over it. If it's going to be a free-for-all as far as waiting to find out who's showing up, are they showing up? And then organizing just to all of a sudden send out a quick text that, okay, we're all leaving at this time. And then they all walk out, you know. So we've got to try to get ahead of this a little bit. So yes, you will, once these meetings are taking place, you will definitely be in the loop on, on the planning for this, there's no question. But again, it's, this is all just come up last week, so it's way too early to know. But I want, I want to just make it public that we're aware of it and we're, we're going to work on a plan to work with them. Okay?
I just had a quick question, maybe you can, maybe you can answer it off the cuff or you can bring it up the next meeting. So I did a tour, Raleigh was able to join me on Friday morning walking through the Dilworth building. And I know you brought up at one point, we had a fire marshal report and there was some stuff that we needed to address, where are we at with that?
Fire marshal, everything is done other than the one that we have an extension. Work covered for the rest of this school year, it's the music room upstairs. And the, the issue there is that the music room needs to have another exit if it has more than fifty students that are in there. And so we've got a plan for that. So we, we have that, we're okay as long as we monitor what we've got. But it's the idea that we know at some point we'll have fifty or more, so let's just get it. So we do have quotes already coming to deal with that over the summer. And so in April, when the board has a work session on capital projects, that'll be brought up at that one.
And then also, just visiting with Heidi briefly, you know, they're talking about a sixth section for eighth grade. Have administrators, administrators started brainstorming where we can possibly put this section?
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to be having discussions this spring, April?
Yep, yep. Because all of the, April is when the, and that's the reason you haven't seen Rose Anns yet. Because all of those program expansion requests will all come at the same time. So you'll get them emailed out before the work session so that, that way you can ask questions in advance. And then you'll, basically, the, the, the goal is March twelfth, you'll have presentations on all of those, knowing that any requests of increases of FTEs won't come until March twenty-sixth. So you have the information, then we have it public. And then that way you've got another meeting before you have to take any action. And you can find out where we're at financially, because the twelfth, we go over the budget again.
And then I forgot to mention in policy, we talked about four fourteen, can you just give an update to where that is for everybody?
Four fourteen, fourteen is with legal counsel. That's, there was some recommendations from the, the counselors. Because it's, it's really just one section that they had concerns about. And then some of that reporting that they have to do with the eighteen-year-olds and such.
Were they looking at it like as a Minnesota statute, like legalities, is that what they're looking at?
That's what, we've got the lawyers to find out, okay. The recommendations that we were given from that, because that was coming from some of the other school districts in the Twin Cities. And in particular, now that we know another legislation, legislative session is underway, you know, if we all of a sudden pull this out, but it's going to be, even if it wasn't implemented in statute right now, you know, we might as well get this line linked together right now. Because the procedures for staff are already implemented as far as on the mandated reporting. So we have that whole process where, when somebody fills it out, they give it to their, a copy to the principal and it goes to the central office. Brooke puts it into a, a database with all of it, we have it all linked. And that way, and then everybody who filed the report gets an email back showing that it was date-stamped. So all of those other procedures are already in place. So the only thing that we haven't done, Lindsay, on this, is that part that is associated with the counselors. That's the only part that anybody's waiting on.
We anticipate this relatively soon back from them or?
Good question. I mean, I, I.
It just seems like we've been working on this one for a while, so.
Well, it's, it's, but again, the rest of it's all in place. It's, it's just a matter of, you know, waiting for, okay, the, the, that. If it wasn't for that one paragraph, remember, that was redlined, that's the only thing that is just sitting down there with them. And so I don't know how, you know, if it's something that, I, I, if it's something that is really important, we can have them put a rush on it, but I don't think the counselors are that worried about it not getting implemented yet. Because as soon as you approve this, then that just puts that much more pressure on them from their side. Any others? Again, if you, if you see something in that RFP that you have questions, call me tomorrow or, because I'm going to be working with Jeannie on getting the plans in place to get that to the forum and getting it on the website on Wednesday. That's finally it.
All right, so we will move on to the approval of the February twelfth regular meeting minutes. There's a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is that Amy? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, eight point one under the claims and accounts.
All board bills this month or this meeting are two hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred fifty-three and eighty-nine cents.
The treasures report is in there, Minnesota liquid asset activities account, and the resignation of Selena Lara, custodian effective March seventh.
Well, that one didn't last long because we disapproved your contract last time.
Yeah.
That's too bad.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Bobby? All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to nine point one, early retirement agreements. Looking for a motion. Again, the recommendation from the personnel was what the man, what the master agreement says plus additional six thousand. And that is what we're recommending for all that have requested.
So what's the amount?
It's
Well, it's a five thousand sixty-six, that's in the master, times three in, in the agreement.
So five thousand sixty-six times three.
Plus the six thousand.
But that's in the master agreement, so the motion that you're going to be working on has nothing to do with that, just so you, this is on the early retirement incentive. So it's just what that amount is.
So Amy, what are you going to put on your, on your sheet in that where it says amount per secretary?
Six thousand.
Right.
Okay, that's all I was wondering.
Okay, sorry.
Kind of going back and forth.
Okay. So do I have a motion to?
I will make a motion to approve the individual early retirement incentive compensation offer in the amount of six thousand dollars for request and it is part of the criteria established by Minnesota statute.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rich. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point two, administrative contract, looking for a motion for John Jacobson, director of technology.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead, Bobby.
Second by Raleigh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point three, the approval of administrative contract for Tracy Tellison, director of community ed, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Rich. Is there a second? Second by Bobby. All the, any further discussion? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
That shows a three-three. Can I get suggestions on where this would go from there since this has already come from personnel? Where would this need to go to? Would this need to go to the administrative?
Well, and do you want to do another motion? I mean, as for something else? Is, is it, is the, is, is it based on the percentage of increase? Is it, I mean, that's where you got to decide because with the committee, is this that you want to negotiate with the person individually for a different amount? Those of you who voted against it.
I just feel like it needs to go back to administrative and concerns can be shared.
So, so.
Go back to, go back to the committee then if that's the case. We'll go back and talk about it with the administrative committee that meets next Monday.
Okay, so not the personnel that would go on to administrative committee?
Either or. I think it needs to be looked at again.
So with a, with a different amount or what? Because there's, the recommendation's going to be the same as far as coming from the superintendent. So I'm, I'm just curious on what it is. This is someone who's, this is an existing year contract, okay? So if, if you have a different percentage that you want to propose, again, this is no different than the early, early incentive retirement pieces. You approved tonight six thousand. That doesn't mean that they're going to agree to it.
I think, I think we're fully aware of that, yes.
Okay, so then what is it that, I guess my question is, what is it that the next administrative, the next committee is going to be bringing forward? What is it that the intent, the hope would be that you're going to bring forward?
Zero percent.
Okay, make a motion for it. Offer it. And then if the person turns it down, then it goes to a committee that you had.
Or we can carry it till the next meeting, correct? We can, because right now there's no action on that contract, correct?
Absolutely. But if, if, my point is, if, if your recommendation, those of you who voted against this, if your recommendation is zero percent, if that's how you're going to support, then make a motion on it. And have the person, see if the person's going to accept it.
Question. So Bobby and I and Raleigh, we're going to meet on Monday. You want to bring this to this, to that committee, to our administrative committee?
That's, that was my question.
What, what do you want to, and I agree with Brian, what, okay, so what, what do you want to bring? I'm all ears. Whatever you, you know, you guys come up with.
I just don't, I, I'm not in agreeance based on some stuff we can't, this is a business meeting. I cannot discuss it in public, but in private. I have concerns and I do not think three percent is the correct amount.
I also have quite a few concerns. So I think, probably the best thing to do would be just no action on tonight and schedule it for another meeting. Maybe the committee.
The committee?
It's got to go somewhere else.
The committee, one that is, that you guys had talked about, the March fifth.
Bring it up there.
So, and again, you, I, I think everybody knows this, but I, again, if there are particular concerns, those should be directed to me because you sure as heck cannot talk about personnel performance at an open meeting.
Correct.
Correct. So I make a motion to send it to the administrative committee that's going to meet on Monday. And at that time, the three of us that voted no can share our concerns, so they're aware.
Can you though?
No, you can't. No, you, you, you need to do it one, you need to set up meetings with me, one-on-one.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's a public meeting.
Okay. So just make a motion to have it go to the administrative committee. And I will be happy to discuss my concerns with you, Brian.
Okay, and then the meeting on Monday, then bringing it back to the board on the.
On the twelfth, following the.
So has there been performance reports in the past? I mean, with Tracy, is she?
This is not, we cannot discuss.
You can't discuss that?
We can't discuss.
Okay, I'm just curious because I don't know what's going on here. I, I, okay, I just thought it was something that we were going to, because it is part of the contract, right?
Right, right. And this is just past practice we've always done is the three percent, whatever they're doing.
But I'm going to probably be bringing all contracts to the board individually from this point forward.
If that's what you'd like to, if that's what you'd like to do, Brian, I'm not going to get in a bullying match right now. We had a vote.
I'm not either.
That's fine, but we're moving forward.
Yeah, I agree.
Let's, let's keep moving.
But, but again, I, I'm saying that because when I hear that discussions before a meeting are coming, that people may not be voting to support this, that tells me we need to be a little bit more transparent about this because I find out about it the first thing today, and that's fine. So I think to make it transparent, to, to make, and I, and I tried calling you back.
I was very disappointed.
As, as, so anyway.
Well, this is also, as a board member, this is the first I've heard of it too, so I, I just wanted to talk.
Well, I mean, we're not supposed to discuss.
Okay.
So, okay, the motion has been.
Somebody has.
Will be tabled or it will be sent to administrative committee for their Monday, March fifth meeting, as it did not pass. Moving on to nine point four, under the administrative contract for Roseanne Allness, ECFE coordinator, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay. Is there a second?
A second.
By Amy. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point five, the non-certified contract for Devon Zimbalman, custodian, fourteen seventy-seven, effective March eighth. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Amy?
Bobby.
Bobby, sorry.
Second.
Second by Rich. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Policy is what is already discussed. This is the motion to approve the first reading of eight oh one, equal access to school facilities. Eight oh two, disposition of obsolete equipment and materials. Eight oh five, waste reduction and recycling. Eight oh seven, health and safety policy. Nine oh three, visitors to school districts, building and sites.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Looking at ten point one, operations meeting is set up. Our next meeting is March twelfth at five o'clock. This is in Dilworth, followed by a board meeting in Dilworth. The administrative committee agreed to the Monday night, March fifth, at the high school at five thirty for their committee meetings.
Didn't we have in Brian's report, we were going to do a work session after the March twelfth meeting?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Also on Brian's eval, I am going to be gone for the next week, so I'm wondering if I could get an extension on that.
No, it wasn't.
Also, one other thing I just wanted to mention before we adjourn. I was going through some of my notes from last spring. It was kind of the end of April, beginning of May kind of thing. And we had talked about doing a climate survey and we, we just said that that's not a good time of year to do it since it's at the end of the year. Can we hit that on the head before?
What are we going to, what are we going to survey? That's what we've been, we've been talking about at the ILT because we haven't even identified all the stakeholders yet. I mean, if it's, again, you know, and we've talked about this at ILT for, I don't know, three months probably. The only group of stakeholders right now that we'd be surveying is staff. What about the students? What about the students? What about the parents? And that's one of the reasons we want to get these committees together so that we have all the stakeholders that have an opportunity to have input into what are we, what are we going to survey? What's the purpose of the survey?
So were you thinking next winter again already or what?
Depending upon what we're going to survey.
Right, but I mean, we just had talked about getting it done this last winter. That was going to be the best timeframe. That's what we all agreed upon and we haven't.
And the company out of business that we were looking at and I remember that.
Yeah, the one did, the one did. But, you know, I think a bigger, I mean, there's a bigger issue. And it's the reason why we're, we're trying to get climate and not just, you know, climate culture because this isn't just about surveying particular stakeholders. This is about surveying lots of stakeholders and giving lots of stakeholders an opportunity to talk.
Right.
So, and, and I think it needs to be a system approach. And, and that's what we've talked about at the ILT meetings.
When is the next ILT meeting?
The ILT meeting, I think we've got another one, I'd say the next week or the week after.
And that, can that be on due?
It is on it, but the thing is, you know, the, the first thing we've got to do is we've got to get, so we finish up getting the meetings with the, the four sites and then finding out who wants to be on the different committees. And then bring that to the board on March twelfth. Here's the ones that are going to be on the different committees. And then bringing in, okay, who are the parents should be in, that should be involved? Who are the other stakeholders that should be involved and get them on the committee? And then get that committee to bring recommendations on what survey. Because spring is a great time to survey staff internally, but who are the other stakeholders? If we're really going to put a system approach about surveying, what is it we're surveying for?
Well, I think, I, I think the reason why Amy is bringing it up is we did talk about it last winter. And it's something we've been saying, talking about for a long time. Well, we do a lot of talking sometimes and we don't get a lot of follow-through. So let's find a date, let's make a timeline, and let's get it done.
That's right.
That's what I tell you about committees all the time. Drive me nuts. Have, gimme a timeline.
Yeah.
We're going to talk about it. Let's find a reasonable solution. Let's have an endgame.
And that's why, you know, we've, we've talked about Avid being implemented for two years, and we still don't have that implemented.
So that's something, is that that's part of our goal? So how do we work towards that goal and when do we actually set?
And that's, and that's why, Lindsay, we're having that committee make the decision. That's why we have a culture, climate committee.
Okay.
Not just one group of stakeholders that wants to be surveyed on satisfaction.
Okay, anything else on board comments, future agenda items? Anything else?
What, what would you like this to do with the superintendent evaluation? Are we supposed to? I couldn't hear Amy. I'm sorry. She asked for an, I heard so many. When would you like this to you?
I would like it by the March twelfth meeting.
March twelfth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned, seven thirty-two.